... city council meeting. Welcome to everybody who has joined us here at City Hall and also welcome to everybody who is watching us on Facebook. As we begin, I want to introduce the people sitting up here. To my far right, we have our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to him, we have Councilman Lauren Wise. Next, we have Councilwoman Pamela Holder. Then we have Councilman Mac Morrow. I'm Mayor Maureen Kopeloff. To my immediate left is our city clerk Denise Hodston. Next to Denise is Mayor Proten and Councilman Gary Daniel. Next to Gary is Councilman Erin Baker. And next to Erin is our city manager, Wilson Hooper. With that, I would like to ask Pastor Veronita Alvord from the Brevard First United Methodist Church if she would please come to the podium here and give our invocation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it very much. I just want to say a couple of things. The first is, we were able to host the Empty Bowls fundraiser for Bread of Life this past Saturday, and the community turned out, we had about 300 people who filled their empty bowls with soup for Bread of Life. And we also hosted a Faith and Housing Summit last Tuesday where we talked about civic and religious partnerships, particularly the Davidson River Presbyterian Church opportunity that the city is working with. And then we also talked about some teacher housing on a small plot of land that used to be Rosman United Methodist Church. So it was an exciting time. I'm new in our community still and realizing how important these kinds of partnerships are. Let's pray. Holy God, we thank you for this day. It has been full of busyness. We ask that you help us to pause. Help us to give thanks for the sun, for the flowers and trees that are blooming. Help us to give thanks for the opportunity to live this day, to take deep breaths, and to live in your beautiful world. God, remind us that you made each one, each one of us, and help us look at each other with eyes of deep respect and dignity. God, we pray this in your name, and everyone said, "Amen."
Thank you, Pastor. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are a few seats around over there. Sorry, I'm directing traffic a little bit.
Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. All members are present.
Okay. Counsel, you received the draft agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I would like to add something under unfinished business to pick up off the table the downtown development overlay district second expansion proposal that we tabled at our last meeting.
Okay. You're asking to add that as item L2 on tonight's agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Are there any other modifications to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, not a modification to the agenda per se, but you'll see at your place a modified resolution associated with agenda item M1.
Okay, Counsel, you all have the modified resolution in front of you when we get to that under item M. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. The minutes of the February 19th, 2024, meeting were sent out. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We will now move to public comment. The public is invited to speak during public comment at this time on any topic unless it is a public hearing item on the agenda. And we do have two public hearing items. So if you wanted to speak on any of those, and I don't think so, you needed to have signed up on the other sheets. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of City Council. State your name and address clearly. Limit comments to three minutes or less and avoid repetition. And let me just remind people, I will give you a 30-second warning when you are at two and a half minutes. When you are at three minutes, I will call time. Please follow the common courtesy of finishing that sentence and then sitting down. That is only fair to the other people speaking, to the elected officials, and to the people watching. So please judge your time accordingly. Direct your comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. And groups are encouraged to appoint a spokesperson on their behalf. We will go through the list of people who signed up and the order that they signed. All right, our first person is Billy Parrish.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Billy Parrish. I'm the current board chair of the Heart of Brevard, and I live at 515 Probarde Street. I'm here tonight to present for public comment a statement from the Heart of Brevard Executive Committee. I have edited down our statement slightly in the interest of time, but the council has been given a full statement for the record. The Heart of Brevard recommends the designation and use of the existing Railroad Avenue Depot Park as the primary multi-use hub for the city of Brevard. The designation of the Railroad Avenue Depot was recommended by the Blue Zones Brevard Built Environment Committee in its Acousta Trail, Estito Trail Access Study presented to the Acousta Advisory Committee and the city in the fall of 2022. This study highlighted the depot in the recommendation illustration entitled City of Brevard Depot Park as main Estito Trail head, option G. It was felt then by the Trail Access Analysis Team that utilizing the current facility was clearly the most cost-effective and expeditious option, as the site already contains over 60 paved parking spaces, public restrooms, bicycle repair stations, and sits directly on the city's Estito Trail. In addition, the Heart of Brevard supports the concept of the creation of a Trail Access Point and Information Center underneath of the location where the Acousta Trail enters the city limits of Brevard. The Heart of Brevard further recommends that the designation of the Railroad Avenue Depot Park be the top priority of the city in its pursuit of the creation of Trail Access Information and Access Centers. Given that the actual construction of the city's portion of the Acousta Trail is currently anticipated as beginning in the late summer of 2026, there is ample time for a thorough exploration by the city's Parks and Trails Committee and other partner organizations of the creation of an accessible and cost-effective access point and information center where the Acousta Trail enters the city. Finally, we recommend that the city make as a priority the creation of a designated bike pad linkage from the current terminus of the city's portion of the trail at West Main Street to downtown. Due to this end, the Heart of Brevard pledges to collaborate with the city through our Built Environment Committee in the development and funding of a safe, appealing, and cost-effective bike pad route from the West Main Trail terminus to downtown. The original concept of the Acousta Trail project articulated from the very beginning was that the Acousta Trail would go from Main Street to Main Street. The single trailhead project as proposed for this point in the project timeline feels a bit like a terminus, the proverbial end of the trail rather than an entryway that welcomes trail users to the city of Brevard's multi-use path and greenway that connects visitors coming in and on the Acousta Trail to all that Brevard has to offer. Thank you all for all you do for our community, and thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mayor Kopeloff, for your tireless advocacy and work in making Railroad Avenue Depot Park such a remarkable and flexible public asset. We look forward to working with the city and its partner organizations in bringing the dream of the Acousta Trail to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Our next speaker is James Tyson.
It strikes me as strange that I'm up here speaking in favor of getting plenty of exercise, but I bunged up my leg, so I apologize. I'd just like to speak in favor of this plan that we have to develop a park in the area of right behind the hospital apartments and use it as not so much a trailhead but as a beginning for another part of the Acousta Trail. We need to really work on exercise and prevention, and having something like this, we will have places to exercise, we will have places to get folk in and walking, and adults more so than children. There are plenty of places in town for children and for parks, but I'm more interested in people much younger than I, but also, as I am, I want to get us out, I want to get us walking, because it is much, much easier to prevent illness than to treat illness. And I think this would be a great case to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ashley Borman.
I live at 191 Allison Road. Thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak tonight about the proposal on tonight's agenda about Allison Road. I do live on Allison Road, but I still think this was an unnecessary project, even if I didn't. I actually find the proposal a little bit confusing. I'm mostly confused about why this would even be considered as a trailhead for the Acousta Trail. Please don't get me wrong. I am not opposed to the trail, but I don't see how any businesses would benefit from a trail access that is two and a half miles away from downtown. The natural place to have a trailhead is where infrastructure already exists. It should also be close to businesses that can actually benefit from the additional visitors. You have a lovely building on Railroad Avenue, and I'm glad someone else spoke to that tonight, that fits both of these requirements. Choosing an existing location with parking and facilities already in place just makes more sense than changing an entire neighborhood to build a parking lot in a beautiful and peaceful location. I have many other concerns of developing this space at all. The greenway should remain as green as possible. I would like to share with you guys a letter that my third grader wrote, and she came up with this. I told her, like, they might put a playground or a parking lot at the end of our street, and she's like, who do I address my concerns to? She ran to her room. So I'll let you all read it in entirety, but she talks of the birds, foxes, snakes, and salamanders that call that field home. Is there a way to work with the Pisgah Health Foundation to conserve the land and keep the trail that's already there? I hope you will read her letter and consider what developing that field would mean, not only for this generation, but future generation of Brevard residents.
Can I share the letter? Please get it to the clerk. She'll share it with everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is DeeDee Perkins.
Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak to counsel. I am here this afternoon wearing many hats. I am a 30-year business owner in downtown Brevard, and a downtown business owner, and a longtime advocate for Brevard. I am also the current chairperson for the Transylvania County Tourism Development Authority. Plans are being presented to City Council this afternoon for a proposed future trailhead for the Acousta Trail to be built on land currently owned by Pisgah Health Foundation near the hospital. I am here to ask City Council to take its time before making such a significant decision about where the official trailhead could be built and consider its financial impacts. The Acousta Trail needs a great trailhead. Its location should be carefully studied, and all viable options should be considered before selecting the proposal that is before you. Brevard's vision for the Acousta Trail and its significant economic impact on our community have been dreamed of and planned for more than 15 years. The original Brevard Trail Committee always believed that the Acousta Trail should sync with the Estito Trail, and together, those trails will pull visitors and residents into the community. For 25 years and longer than that, we have lamented, how do we get people the three and a half miles from Pisgah Forest into our historic downtown? By bringing the trailhead closer to town center, you will increase the economic development impact to this community in monumental ways. As a vested stakeholder and financial supporter of the trail, TDA sees benefits to the trailhead being located closer to Brevard's economic centerpiece and to so many of Brevard's assets. As an example, a viable location to consider is the newly-built Depot Railroad Avenue Park. This major city investment is centrally located to town, ideally located, and already serves as a de facto trailhead for the Estito Trail. And it has multiple public amenities and infrastructure. It provides great connectivity to many of the city's best attractions and public gathering places. The depot provides quick access by hike or bike to the city's remarkable Bracken Mountain Reserve, to the up-and-coming Railroad Avenue Business and.
Thirty seconds.
Millions of dollars would have to be spent at the Pisgah Health Foundation property. Those dollars could be better utilized for trail needs like wayfinding and signage, enhancements to the trail, and long-range maintenance. We are asking that you do an in-depth assessment, consult with stakeholders and your city committees, and take caution before you make the critical decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Our next speaker is James Carley.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and thank you for your dedicated leadership to our community. I come before you today as someone who has a background in both transportation planning and as kind of a spokesperson for many of the younger people who are progressive and independent politically in our community. I want to thank Mayor Kopeloff for your dedicated leadership in the longtime development of the depot building. I live near there, and I see it in heavy use all the time with a variety of civic and social groups, and nonetheless, it is never at capacity. So there's a lot more capacity that it can contain. You know, I would like to echo the comments made by the Heart of Brevard Board in the Transylvania Development Authority against the development of the, what I'm calling the hospital field site at the end of Allison Road, be a trailhead, and in support of greater consideration of various options and stakeholders before approving the proposal to convert that area into this trailhead. One thing that the transportation planner in me wonders about is that it is in a flood zone between two creeks, and if we had visitors who came from Waynesville and parked there and then rode their bikes to Hendersonville to spend the night, and then while they were there, there was heavy rain or flooding, and their vehicles became damaged or new-built infrastructure became damaged, what would the liability costs for the city be? Would owner of a flooded car want to pursue litigation against the city? I don't know, but that's something that came to mind with the flooding risk in that A neighbor also told me, he said, you know, why don't they further develop or pave the parking lot that exists at the recreation fields? That is something that I had heard about today, which I hadn't thought about. You know, I know Conservant Carolina is a stakeholder in the Acousta Trail development, and I remember, I think it was a February 2023 Transylvania Times article that highlighted how this location is a special spot for migratory and rare birds, and so that would be an argument for conserving this space, perhaps working with groups like Conservant Carolina. I would like to reaffirm the points I had sent to each of you in an email earlier this weekend, and encourage you voting against the proposal to develop the hospital field site off of Allison Roads, pending more thought and discussions. And since it was added to the agenda, I'd also encourage the approval of the downtown overlay development district.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you all for your service to this community, and look forward to a fruitful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carley. Our next speaker is Anna Davis.
Hi, thank you for the moment to speak with you. I'm Anna Davis. I'm here as a representative for Brevard Bike Alliance. We've been around in town for about a year now, just trying to advocate for cyclists of all ages and abilities around this town to make it safer and more accessible. Previously, we sent this in an email to most of you, I believe. I'd just like to read a little blurb for the rest of the folks here. Only a few years ago, we cut the ribbon to celebrate our brand-new Railroad Avenue Depot. Every month on the last Wednesday of the month, Brevard Bike Alliance begins our social rides from the depot. These rides have attracted dozens of bike riders across demographics. Each month, we see firsthand the vacant picnic tables, broken bicycle repair stands, and the empty parking lot spaces. Choosing to use the depot as the trailhead could bring vibrancy to the historic neighborhood and beautiful, yet unutilized, building. It is readily equipped with restrooms, bike parking, water bottle stations, lights, and of course, parking. Additionally, it is a given that we hope to encourage the city of Brevard, rather than feeling encouraged to head back after reaching a parking lot of Allison Road, which is nearly two miles shy of the downtown community. In August of 2018, City Council passed a resolution to connect the Estito path to the high school by 2021. Still to today, we have not seen the implementation of this six-year-old resolution. We will acknowledge and are grateful for the section that have been completed. We await the day our children can safely travel to school by foot, bike, or board. We are well acquainted with the many hotspots on existing stretches of the Estito Trail, for example, the unmarked crosswalks, the blind intersections, threatening potholes. And we worry about our community's ability to maintain trail safety as these issues persist unaddressed. We urge you to develop and improve the facilities we already have along the trail and follow through with the August 2018 resolution of taking the Estito to the high school rather than invest in any more into the trailhead, option F. The Acousta and Estito Trails are huge ones for equity and access in our community, providing safe passages for active transportation users as well as recreationists from outside of our community. Building more infrastructure specifically catering to cars.
Thirty seconds.
Without a proven need detracts from the safety and comfort and equity of the community path. We just think it's more important to provide to the cyclists and the active folks of our community than the cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Our next speaker is Madeline Megan.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Embarrassingly, I have not been to a meeting since Lauren Wise and Pamela Holder have joined, so welcome and thank you for all of your work, and thank you to those of you who continue to serve our community. I own 185 King Street and Noble Brown Brewing, which is right around the corner from the existing depot, Railroad Depot, and I want to make comment today towards the proposed Pisgah Health Foundation property to create a parking lot at the end of Allison Road. I believe the Acousta Trail and Estito Trail will prove to be huge economic drivers in our community. However, I don't feel like this project will benefit that function. It is within a neighborhood and not close to businesses as previously mentioned here tonight, and to me, it seems to be an unnecessary development of at-risk land noted in the fact that it's a flood plain. My business is located right around the corner from the current Railroad Depot that you guys invested a lot of time and money into developing, and it's resulted in a very beautiful property that I also see being underutilized at the current time. And I ask the city to focus on finishing the Estito Trail and to focus on breaking ground on the Acousta Trail before considering adding more parking when the current parking isn't being fully utilized. Of course, at that time, if it is being fully utilized and we need more parking, I feel like answer the question then rather than before the trail is done. I've sat in several meetings where several members of the city council, as well as concerned citizens, have brought up a topic and concern that people will reach the end of the Acousta Trail and think that's the end, and think they've reached Brevard when they're in Pisgah Forest. I think that building this parking lot here would only make that situation worse rather than bringing them closer to town. I would encourage using the current facility that you've built to be the gateway to the Acousta Trail, and then that would bring people closer into downtown. In conclusion, please focus on claiming the assets that we already have, in this case, the Railroad Depot, and focus on putting down pavement towards the trail rather than parking spots. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Megan. Our next speaker is Shelley Webb.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Shelley Webb. I feel like I live at 164 Duckworth Avenue. That is where I work. That is the Sharing House. I'm the executive director, and I'm just here really for two things, to say thank you for your incredible leadership and to give you a report of something that's happened for the past year and three months. There's been a great surge of cooperation and collaboration between nonprofits and the county government, the city government, private citizens, and other funding foundations. We have started something called Brevard Transylvania County Housing Coalition, and we meet once a month on the fourth Tuesday of every month. At one o'clock, we change it. That's why I had this number. Fourth Tuesday of every month at one o'clock at the Habitat for Humanity Conference Room. Several of you have attended and were founding members of our council, and we are just thrilled that this past week at Brevard First United Methodist Church, we held our first Faith and Housing Summit. We had over 100 people attending. There was Dogwood Health Trust telling us about collaborative efforts. We had the Ormond Center from Duke Divinity School there to talk about rural communities and what can communities of faith do to work with our existing partners with city and county governments so that we can truly help people who are in crisis. Sharing House has been around for 43 years. There is a housing crisis going on. There's 0.1% availability for rent, which if we want people to serve and work and live here believing that everyone has an intrinsic sacred value to have housing, we are falling short. We believe that we can work together. I've wanted to tell you a story because I think stories make it real, and I see it every day, and sometimes I feel like I've got to speak for these folks because they... like I've got to speak for these folks because they're welcome here, but they don't often come. January, I was helping a new member of our community who lives up in the Rosman area in a trailer park with wheels to work. We were actually handing the keys over to her with her brand-new van. She was in the-
Thirty seconds.
She looked across the street and she said, do you know if the Haven has any spaces? And she was thrilled to be getting a van because she said, she's a CNA, her husband worked in landscaping, it's January seasonal. And she said, I'm worried that at the end of this month, we'll be evicted. At least I'll have a van to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Our next speaker is Lynn Bartosz.
Council members and Mayor Kopilov, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm on the advisory board for Freedom Park. And I went out to the property recently. There are plans for a wonderful playground out there, and it will serve from the very young to senior residents. It will also serve those with special needs. And it will provide additional parking spaces so that there could be overflow parking if the area at the depot were to fill up. And if the Acusta Trail does become as popular as I think it's going to be, I think that that parking may very well be very important. I also think it's very important to have an area where people can get out and play and exercise that area in that area of town versus the downtown area where we have our playgrounds currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bartosz. All right, that is everyone who signed up for public comment. At this point, we have a, we will move into special presentations. And let's see, I will turn it over to our city manager to open the special presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Today's presentation is going to be a team effort. We've got city staff, Friends of Acusta Trail, Pisgah Health Foundation, and our design firm, Transportation Planning and Design here to contribute. I'm going to start with a few words about how we got here, and then I'll throw to Julie Heinisch and Dave Newman from the Pisgah Health Foundation to share their vision for the property. Next, we'll turn to Mark Thule, who everyone knows from Friends of Acusta Trail, who will share amenities from other trailheads that he and his folks have seen and that they like. So the folks in the room and our viewers can have a sense of the type of facilities that could go on the Pisgah Health property. But Mark is also here in another capacity, and that is as a potential funder. Because Friends of Acusta Trail is one of the nonprofits we'll go to to ask if they're willing to sponsor this project. And so I want to make sure he hears the proposal and that it's something that he is convinced by and is willing to take to his board and perhaps sponsor. I need to note that we have to go to nonprofit partners for funding because the trailhead project on this site or at the depot for that matter is not eligible for funding from the grants. The grant money, the federal grant money that we got, RACE and NSFLTP, can only be used on the railroad right-of-way and adjacent properties. That was a provision of the grant that was in the application. And so the development of any trail-related amenity outside that footprint has to be funded from outside sources. We might could go back to the feds and ask them to expand the footprint of the project zone, but I think that that would be a lengthy and risky prospect. So I would not recommend we do that. I recommend we spend our local dollars from our patrons on these kind of amenities. After we hear from Mark, we'll hear from Teresa Buckwalter from Transportation Planning and Design. As I said, they're the firm that's overseeing the design and engineering for the main part of the trail. And they're the firm that staff and I would recommend we hire to perform the engineering and design for this project if it moves forward. They're going to share some information on similar projects that they've done before and make a recommendation on the next steps we ought to take with this project if the council's interested in moving forward. They'll also give us a price tag on what those next steps will cost. I'm of the opinion that their information is probably the most notable that we'll hear today. Okay, so how did we get here? There's a little bit of background in your agenda package that I hope you read. In October 2022, before we even got the federal grants, two members of our Parks and Trails Committee, Billy Parrish and John Titillo, did a little fieldwork and identified a half dozen or so potential sites for an Acusta Trailhead. And that's the information that I submitted to you with your agenda. I thought it was a pretty good assessment because it listed pros and cons for each site. And the site does indeed have some pros and cons. A couple of the sites that they assessed are owned by the county, which means they're not available for trail stuff. And then after their presentation, we also explored some other sites that were not listed on their assessment but were close by, including the Kason property off of Acusta Road. And they gave us a hard no, even when we floated the possibility of buying the property from them. And we also explored the property near the Acusta Mills Settling Pond, which, as with all things related to that property, had significant roadblocks associated with acquiring it. This Pisgah Health property rose to the top of the list because, all things considered, and despite its challenges, it's a promising site. Number one, it's got a willing owner. It's got a good location at the junction of two trails, and it's got a ready-made pastoral setting. It's promising enough that when Pisgah Health approached us with the possibility of a partnership, I directed staff to perform some basic due diligence to determine whether it was even developable or not. And that's the second package of information that you have with your agenda. That due diligence found that the property was developable with some work. And when they get to their part of the presentation, TPD is going to talk about exactly what kind of work that is. But because there's work involved and because there's other possibilities, we wanted to touch base with you today to make sure there's interest in pursuing this possibility before we dedicate the time and resources that's needed to pursue it further. So those are my introductory remarks. With that said, I'll introduce Julie and Dave from Pisgah Health Property and ask them to come up and share their vision for the property with us.
I'm Dave Newman. I'm a member of the Pisgah Health Foundation, along with the fine doctor here. And it kind of looks like you have to be handicapped to be on the committee, but that's not true. We've just lived a long time. The Pisgah Health Foundation is excited to have a chance for a possible partnership with the city of Brevard. We've had this vacant property ever since we were incorporated, and we see it's an opportunity to make a gift to the community, working with the city to create a space that could serve, if you so choose, as a trailhead to the Acusta Trail and to include a small park with amenities. And it being in a flood zone, the highest and best use, we feel, is this. The property will be able to provide health and wellness opportunities for the county and for the community. Julie Heinisch is going to share more details about our vision for the park. And if you have questions, I'll answer them once she's completed because I think she'll answer a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you all for the opportunity to kind of present our vision. And I apologize for the allergy voice, too, so bear with me on that. Our vision of Freedom Park is to create a space where all ages, literally from zero to 100, can come out, play, and exercise. Part of the property would be an ADA-compliant playground that would include playground equipment, sensory play activities, benches, and a covered picnic area. We also plan to include adult fitness stations. And just like with the children, it will serve all ages and all abilities. We think this ties in really well with Brevard recently being named an AARP, was it Age Friendly Community? And that aspect of it also serves a demographic that we're not currently serving. Depending on how much space could be available, we've also envisioned there could be a tricycle park in there. PHF staff, we visited the adventure park at Trailblazer Park down in Traveler's Rest, and we were very impressed with what we saw with their playground. Based on that observation and conversations with their staff and the research that they did, we identified Compan as a company that we're interested in working with regarding the park part. Now regarding the pieces, number one, it's important to us that the pieces have a natural look and they fit in well with the environment. So we've asked the Compan representative to do the design that you're looking at right now to get an idea of what it could look like. This is just an idea. There's also another slide. I don't know whether you can show the second slide that shows. This is one of the elements in that design. So again, you can just get an idea of the different aspects of that particular piece, and you can see how it's accessible to children of all abilities. The next slides are on the adult fitness stations. Again, there's just some schematics. These are pieces that are low to the ground. Again, just an idea, they have lots of different pieces, but we want to give everybody a sense of what do these look like. So I know this is slide one, and then there's a second. Yeah, okay, so we've shown those two slides. In terms of the size of Freedom Park, it is a big piece of property, but we're certainly not envisioning that entire piece is going to be a huge playground. I would say think of it similar in size or maybe a little bit larger of like Franklin Park in terms of space it would be taking up with any of these amenities. We know the wooded area is a very popular place. I know it's big for birding, and we've actually have tossed around some ideas. But we don't want to put anything in that area. We've talked about some ideas of do we put some signage or some blocks in there for children to go and learn more about the birds that do inhabit that area. We do have an advisory committee of community members that's providing some input, suggestions, and ideas in terms of what elements would be good to include in that. And if this is approved, once everything is finalized, this will be, we will do fundraising through the Pisgah Health Foundation to raise some money for these elements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinisch.
Mark? Thank you. I wanted to present some elements that you might find at a trailhead. This is a diagram, simple diagram showing this main entrance street on the bottom, parking in front. And then behind that is a restroom where you would find kiosk signage, maybe a drinking fountain, that sort of thing, and then trail access behind it. We feel it's important wherever the trailhead is located that it have a distinctive beginning. This is the CNO tow path in Cumberland, Maryland. It signifies the beginning of that path. Parking, obviously, is important. This is chose this because it's a gravel lot would be more permeable to rain and not have as much runoff. This is an example of a well-developed trailhead area with restrooms, a shelter off the back with picnic tables. On the left there in the shadows, you'll see a bike repair station. Behind the planning on the right is a set of drinking fountains with bike racks behind that. Those are generally common elements. It's important to direct people and also inform people, users of the trail. The sign on the left has trail rules as well as some safety information about using the trail. The one on the right is trail rules. Also contain some maps to help direct people, give people an idea of what's in front of them. This is a real good example of wayfinding signage to show what's available and how far away it is. You'll see information about restaurants, restrooms, parking, bike repair stations, and even an ATM is indicated on there. This is a close-up of a map, which we thought would be useful to send people to different attractions, that sort of thing, in our downtown or business area. And trail art is all over the place, and it's really interesting, really adds a lot to the trail. It'd be a way for us to engage and showcase some of ours in the area. And then, you know, a place for people to sit and contemplate. I think this is a butterfly garden. You've got some artwork there of butterflies. And even in the blue area there is some donor recognition area. So I just wanted to give you an idea of some elements that are part of a trailhead, and we'll get one built somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right.
As Wilson mentioned, I'm Teresa Buckwalter, and I'm with TPD. And I appreciate you allowing us to come here tonight and just talk about some initial findings that we saw. We just went out to the site one time, but we've done some other desktop kind of review. And then we've also-
Excuse me, Teresa, would you mind using the mic so our viewers online can hear you?
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you. I'm Teresa Buckwalter with TPD. And we were asked to kind of do some just initial investigations of the property. And Kristy Stout is the person on my team, but she is the project manager for the Acusta Trail in Transylvania County and Brevard. Our team is also inclusive of Equinox, and this is a landscape architecture and environmental permitting firm. And they are also working on the Acusta Trail with us. So this is sort of a, would be a team effort, and we just want to share some of our thoughts here. TPD, we do civil and transportation engineering and structural design. We do hydrology and hydraulic studies. And I'm a landscape architect, and I've done a number of trailheads in my career. And like I said, Equinox does a lot of work with parks and engagement and wayfinding. We are the team for the Acusta Trail. And this is a little hard to see the words on the screen, but I thought this was good. We had talked, this is from the DuPont Forest Recreation Person, that trail users will need a way to orient themselves to the Acusta Trail experience. They will need to be oriented with maps and food and convenience opportunities as well as rules and expected courtesies. But additionally, it's the location for you to showcase the effort, to set the experience and the tone for what Brevard is about. So I just want to touch briefly on my trailhead experience. This is between Boone and Blowing Rock, the Middle Fork Greenway that you see in the picture to the right. It's about 30-car parking spaces, and this is right along the Middle Fork Creek. What we did with the stormwater coming off the parking lot was to clean it with the rain garden before it would go into the creek. There's two bridges. Part of it is some floodplain, but we weren't, the bridges were in the floodway, and we were able to get permitting for those. There's another trailhead, which I'm going to kind of share some experience that Equinox has, as well as we have. We've worked with several trailheads, including the Black Bear Access on Lake James and the Chestnut Mountain, which is one of Equinox's projects. And I'll share some visuals throughout this. Short presentation, but here's another trailhead we worked on in the town of Blowing Rock. And so it's not a huge number of parking spaces. What's interesting here, though, that could be tie-in with some of what you all are doing, is that it connects to the sidewalk system. It's outside of downtown, but connects to their sidewalk system so that people can park here and they can get oriented. They can actually walk to downtown Blowing Rock, where parking is a challenge for sure. Then they can launch their adventure eventually. Then they can launch their adventure eventually, so the Middle Fork Greenway is not completed, but eventually they'll be able to go from Blowing Rock to Boone. And then we included some interesting features here. The one on the lower left is an overlook deck, because we know that really people are here to experience the creek, they're here to experience wildlife and birds, and so this is really a spot to sit and be quiet and learn about the ecosystem. And that actually, on the other side, sort of drops off quickly and down into kind of a ravine where the river is. So that's one of our viewing platforms. And then, you know, up on the upper right, you see a map, kiosk, but also some boulders in the background. This is really a donor acknowledgement area, where there are a lot of nonprofits that were part of this, as well as state funders. And so those sort of state funders and foundations were acknowledged at this trailhead, both on the kiosk, as well as, you know, if a private individual gave quite a bit of money, then they've got their name on a bench, or they've got one of the boulders, you know, carved with their name. And then folks who just want to give at sort of lower levels, but not a major gift, but also definitely want to have their contribution acknowledged, there are bricks within the pavement. So this one did, it ended up getting an award, an APA award for Great Healthy Places, to launch your adventure. But we are talking about this property tonight, and so I wanted to share with you some of our initial understanding of this property. We don't, it's not completely comprehensive, and so that's why we're here to propose the next steps, and those investigations that are further, you know, further needed investigations for this property. And then a proposed preliminary design process, wanted to share that with you all. And so this is the property in an aerial photo. You can see in the yellow arrow that it really is a stone's throw from where the Acusta Trail will terminate. The property has a lot happening. It's, really, it's the confluence of the Estito Trail and what will become the Acusta Trail. It's got two creeks on it, it's got some floodway. Access is going to definitely be one of those things that needs a further investigation. And neighborhood context, you know, this is on Ellison Road, and it's a neighborhood, and that really needs to be understood and valued. So that's part of the process that we're going to share with you all, is that kind of listening sessions with neighborhood folks. This is as the crow flies around two miles to downtown, but you all have done such a good job with the Estito Trail that that translates to, you know, somebody in good shape, 10 minutes to ride on their bicycle to downtown. And for someone like me, probably 15 minutes to ride your bicycle downtown. So that's kind of where it's located, as you all know. Like I mentioned, it has two creeks on it, Ellison and Lamb Creek, and one of the first things that we do to investigate is to look at, what is the classification, what is the stream classification? Because this will have implications for permitting and what you can do. And so one of the things, both of these streams on this property are considered trout waters. This doesn't necessarily mean if you go out and fish, you're going to definitely get a trout. This means that the state of North Carolina really very much cares about the buffer. And so that's all the trees and the shrubs alongside the creek banks. And so we need to make sure, if anything happens on this property, need to make sure you're under that threshold of the DEQ's disturbance threshold. So we don't want to disturb anything more than 100 linear foot of stream buffer. So I think that can, we can definitely think that can happen, it's just something that needs to be observed and looked at. And of course, the floodway, which is, you know, a challenge, right? This is probably the most significant challenge, but not something that couldn't be overcome. And so we looked initially at the floodway, and so this is, there's three different categories shown here, there's several categories, but on this map, you've got the yellow, which is what we call the 500-year floodplain. You've got the blue, which is roughly the 100-year floodplain. And so the blue has implications for building, and structures, and electrical. And then there's the hatched part, where that generally follows the two streams. So that hatched part is the floodway, which is the flood hazard zone and could get flooded every year potentially, right? So we just, those are the things where we don't even want to put any kind of fill in the floodway, right? But to access the property, that would be Ellison Road. And so we would have to kind of do some more serious investigations about making sure that anything that's proposed here wouldn't impact what we call the base flood elevation. But you all were smart and did some initial investigation with Andrew Bick, and he's not necessarily, he's not with our firm, but he and I were able to have a conversation and looked at his initial work. And his work came out of existing data, LIDAR data. So it's not a survey, but kind of going out there to the property, taking a look and looking at the readily available contour data. And so what he identified is this, you know, green hatched area, I'm not sure you all can see that on the screen, but the green hatched area, which is called an ineffective flow area. So this is essentially where the velocity is, there's really no velocity right there. So there's some potential for sighting a restroom in a place like that. And so what we would want to do in the further investigation is to get actual topographic survey, have a surveyor kind of do cross-sections of Ellison Creek, and just really kind of develop a model, right? So a three-dimensional model, using the software that we use for floodway analysis. Sort of do a model of the existing condition, and then model the proposed conditions. And so when we say the proposed conditions, it's all the things that you all want to see on the property. So this would be any kind of playground equipment, exercise stations, parking, potential bathrooms. We know for sure wayfinding is going to be really important here. And then the access, whether the access is a culvert or a bridge. And so we'd want to model everything that's proposed, and make sure that we're not causing a rise in the base flood elevation. And in addition, you can see kind of in the picture on the upper right, you know, there's other options for making sure that we are looking at the stormwater issues, like I showed in the initial trailhead design that we did for Middle Fork, is that cleaning that water before it goes into the creek. So that's all really, really important stuff. And so what we're proposing is to look at this as more than a feasibility study, but look at it as a preliminary design. That would be the next step, is kind of looking at a proposal for preliminary design in five phases. Phase one, of course, being community or resident engagement, so really understand that this is a neighborhood context, and really get into understanding what are the challenges to folks who live there, right? And are there some things that can be mitigated, like slowing traffic down, making sure visually that it's not obtrusive? And then the second phase of this would be looking at the access. And so there is pedestrian access already over Ellison Creek, but making sure that any kind of preliminary design, we look at, can that be built in the floodway? Do that hydrology and hydraulic analysis. And so this is really the, kind of the point number three takes the most time and effort, is kind of building that model, understanding what we can and can't do in the floodway. And then the fourth step would be just really looking at doing a site analysis, and what Julie shared earlier, kind of looking at where would you cite those elements? And what Mark showed earlier, those are all key things that we would have to kind of determine where on the property would those things be, and how would people get to those, and how would circulation happen? So that's kind of the fourth component of this proposal. And then the fifth is really getting down to answering these questions about permitting, answering these questions about cost. So how much, if with all the things that might happen on a site like this, getting to a really good cost estimate, so you all can make some decisions, and really understanding the permitting. So you understand those hurdles that you'd have to go through before you put it out to construction. So part of that I talked about was the hydrology and the hydraulic analysis, and this is, would be looking at survey data and the FEMA floodplain models, creating an existing condition model, and modeling any elements on the property and determining their impact. And then, of course, preliminary design, to sort of integrate the Acusta Trail terminus, to do those site elements and the design of the pedestrian circulation, and develop the concept, and almost the character. Something like this, a proposal like this would take, we think, six to eight months, and so I've shown that on a timeline here, thinking, talking about really starting with that engagement piece, and further investigation with a survey, and then the preliminary design, and then really kind of getting to a really solid construction cost estimate based on that preliminary design. And then, of course, that the final step is, you know, you've gotten these major questions answered, right? So you're not going into final design still kind of with some questions out there, you know what you need to do. And then it's the final design with 100% bid documents that you can give to, you can bid out to construction folks. So that's kind of the timeline, and that's our overall presentation of what we would recommend as next steps, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Teresa. Mr. Manager?
Teresa, would you please scroll back to slide 14? Thank you. So council, they have provided a scope for their services, and I wanted her to go to this slide, because it lists the five major elements of their proposal. The total cost of their proposal is $85,000 to perform those five major elements. And in particular, number three is a highly technical process that requires a lot of expertise, and therefore, in my opinion, justifies the cost, because you have to be a specialist to know how to do that kind of stuff. So $85,000 for those five major elements there. And at the end of the eight months, we have a plan that will tell us the approximate cost of constructing the trailhead, and what it'll take to make it happen. And so that concludes our presentation for now, but I know that we'll be talking about this a little bit later in the agenda, but if you have any questions for any of our guests, as Teresa said, they're here to answer those for you.
I will open it up for any council questions. Mr. Wise, any questions?
Can I, I'm not sure if I want to ask these questions now, or under new business.
We can certainly do it under new business.
That's my, that's what I'm going to do. I'm not telling anyone else what they should do.
I believe all of our presenters will still be here, right? Yes, so, yes, you can get your questions answered later. Ms. Holder, any questions now?
I came here with three pages of questions based on reading the packet, and I have more questions, and still may have more when Mr. Wise asks his. I wish we were discussing affordable housing. $85,000 for the analysis is concerning for me, and I would like to see, I guess, what it might look like if we looked at both locations, so that I could compare. What is it going to cost to do this at the depot? What would it cost, we know part of the cost, just to look at it or consider it, we're starting with $85,000. Then my next question would be, is Pisgah Health taking care of the building and the developing? Who's paying for that? And then, you know, we're talking about raising more funds, you know, is this a priority? And have we completed our projects on the parks that we've already started?
I believe the manager can answer some of the funding questions that you just had. Mr. Manager, can you address Ms. Holder's funding questions?
Yes, ma'am. So Pisgah Health's primary contribution will be the land, but I have suggested to them that we might need to come back to them and ask them to underwrite a larger part of the construction cost. They would also raise funds for the playground equipment and the elements of the park that they want to include. But the money for things like the bathrooms, the bridge, the parking lot, we would approach other nonprofit partners, including Friends of the Acusta Trail, perhaps TDA and others, to see if they'd be willing to consider partnering to fund those parts of the facility. And later on, when we get to the next steps, you'll see in the resolution that one of the things I'm asking you to authorize me to do is to fundraise and to go out and do my imitation of a development officer and try to find sponsors and fundraisers for this facility.
I love the idea of having a wellness park, I really do, a health and wellness park, I I just want to make sure that what we're doing is a priority. Have we completed projects that we've already started in other projects, in other parks? And if not, can we go back to that? And I think that it would be a great idea that, you know, if we have the depot and we use this property as well. My concern, of course, is the fact that it is a flood zone, and we would have to find out, we would have to spend $85,000 to even find out if we can use it. So I have many questions, and maybe some have the others to ask their questions, and I'll get mine answered as well. And will you come back to me if I need more?
Yes, yes, we can always come back. You can always ask more questions. And of course, we'll come back to it again under new business.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Teresa, I know, I'm really excited about this being a wellness park, not really excited about the access options. Was wondering if the, because of the Cedar Cliff's development, have access there now? Expanding their parking lot on the park side just seemed to be a practical matter. And that, does the city, and maybe this is a question for the manager, but does the city have any leverage, the fact that we have a sewer easement across that property? Could we use that sewer as a leverage to say, well, you don't give it to us, we'll put one on the other side of the road? I don't know, but Mr. Managers, has that been explored?
The notion of using the sewer for leverage, no, sir. The possibility of building our access through the apartments, yes. And of course, that's more challenging, because we do not own that road, that's a private road.
Right.
We either have to buy it or take it from them. And also because you can't quite see it on the map, but an entrance from that direction would have to cross two creeks, and actually be more challenging hydrologically than crossing one creek.
I'm thinking you just expand their parking lot.
To the triangle-shaped part there?
Yeah, you see, if you just double their parking lot, you probably could, or you're probably getting close. And it's in, it's not down in the flood area. Anyway, just as a thought.
Yeah, I think that's worthy of exploration. Yeah, I don't know that we have any answers to...
No, I'm not looking for an answer, but if it's, because what I don't like either is the idea of a trailhead, because it's not big enough, in my sense. And we'll get into that later, but maybe, but it's somewhat limited. However, you would still have, no matter what amenities we put on the Estito Trail, it's going to have to be an interpretive center as to where you are and where you're going, and how to get to wherever you're going. Because if you want to go to Dolly's, you know you didn't miss the turn. So you see what I mean? So, all right.
Mr. Daniel?
Well, I have, as Pamela said, I have a lot of thoughts on this. I have two questions for now, and I'll save my new business. But the first is, could you tell us what the Parks and Trails Committee's recommendation is on this?
Have access.
Someone?
My recollection is that they didn't have one.
Can you tell us how much money we've already spent on this?
I want to say Andrew Bick's fee was about $1,800, something in that neighborhood. And that's all the money we've spent so far.
Okay, so, those are my two questions.
Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, I have a lot of comments, and I think I'm going to keep everybody on the edge of their seat, and make sure that you stick around through the rest of our agenda, get your civic duty in, learn a little bit about the Bryant House, which is going to be amazing to hear about, and we'll talk about this later on. So thank you.
All right. If there are no more questions from council, we will move on to the next portion of our agenda. Thank you all for that great presentation. All right, our next item is a public hearing, and we are going to do this a little different than we do most of our public hearings, because this is a joint public hearing. So the first thing I need to do is I need to ask council to please... to please make a motion to recess our regular meeting. Do I have a motion to recess?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now recessed. Council, I now need a motion to convene a joint public hearing of the Brevard City Council and the Joint Historic Preservation Committee.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I now need to ask the JHPC Chair, Marcy, I believe is filling in for the Chair, to convene the JHPC members for the joint public hearing.
Thank you. We do have court here tonight for the Joint Historic Preservation Commission. And so, in our meeting to order in a joint meeting of the City Council. All in favor?
All right, we are now in a joint public hearing. And let's see, I will also ask our attorney, do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, at this point, we will have a presentation. I believe Catherine Busby from our Planning Department will open it.
This will be a lot less contentious than what we were talking about before.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Today, I'm here to talk about the Bryant House located at 132 King Street, owned by Paul Willander. He applied to the Joint Historic Preservation Commission to be locally designated. Once we received an application and a designation report, which should be in your packet, we had some comments. He revised his report, and then we sent it to the State Historic Preservation Office. They reviewed it. They approved it with some comments which have been revised. And now, we need you guys to approve an ordinance to locally designate it. Once approved, any repairs or reconstructions must have a certificate of appropriateness approved by the JHPC so they can't just go and change something without coming to the board first. The benefits of being locally designated allows the owner to receive a 50% deferment in taxes, which, based on last year's assessment, is about $1,607. Here to talk about what gives this house historical significance and integrity is our local historian, Marcy Thompson. So, Marcy, if you want to come up, she's going to talk about the history and why it's important.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us this evening. Before I talk about the house, I just want to mention, for anyone who may not know, the Joint Historic Preservation Commission is a nine-member board appointed by the county commissioners and charged with preserving local historic properties within the county, the city of Brevard, and the town of Rosman. The responsibility of the commission is to keep an inventory of potential properties of historic, architectural, and/or cultural significance. We review and investigate applications such as this one for landmark properties, approve alterations like Catherine mentioned. We also promote historic preservation education for citizens of the county. There are currently 23 locally designated historic properties in the county. Some are also on the National Register of Historic Places or located within one of the two National Register of Historic Places districts in the city of Brevard. So, the Bryant House, as Catherine mentioned, is located at 132 King Street, which was originally Depot Street. It was built in 1916. And that's the property we're presenting to you tonight. Architecturally, it is a fairly typical two-and-a-half-story craftsman-style framed dwelling of the era, 1916-ish. I want to talk briefly about what makes it unique and worthy of a local designation, though. Although there have been few, there were a few early alterations. After nearly 110 years, the home retains much of its original character and architectural features. The greater significance, to me at least, though, is the cultural value of this home. The Bryant House was built to serve as a boarding house. The application, which you can read, goes into details about the historic background and context of boarding houses in general and in Transylvania County. They were the bed and breakfasts plus of the early 20th century. The Bryant House had a distinct advantage over other local boarding houses in its location. It was located just a block from the depot where traveling salesmen and visitors arrived daily. Deed research shows that the property changed hands numerous times through the years, but basically, it was owned and operated by two families of women. Ida Shipman Bryant built it following the death of her husband. For the next 14 years, Mrs. Bryant, or her mother, and three sisters, lived in and managed the Bryant House. The Shipman women were pioneers in Transylvania County's tourism growth. The property changed hands a couple of times in the early 1930s before it came under the management of Leona Salts. The Salts family members are listed as the owners of the property for the next 70 years, during which time Mrs. Salts and then her daughter, Morde- Mordecia Neely, operated the Bryant House. Like the Shipman women, the women of the Salts family were savvy business leaders in Transylvania County's booming hospitality business. In addition to accommodating overnight guests, the Bryant House served as a gathering place for many local groups and civic organizations, including the Lions Club, the Kiwanis Club, the Brevard Country Club, and various women's group. It was also reputed to provide some of the best meals in town. And finally, the Bryant House was the longest-serving boarding house in the county, still accommodating rumors, rumor, rumors, borders in 2007, after 90 years. All of this cements its value as an architectural, historical, and culturally significant place in our town history. Thank you. If you have any questions.
All right, at this point, I will officially open the public hearing. We had nobody sign up to speak on this public hearing, so I will now officially close the public hearing on behalf of Council and on behalf of JHPC.
JHPC has to close their own hearing.
Okay, I'm closing the hearing. Now, I need a motion from JHPC to please close your part of the hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, the public hearing is closed by both of us. Okay, now, I need Council, I need a motion to come out of recess and to resume our regular meeting.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, guys, we did really great getting through that. All right. Thank you. Yes, in fact, I think at this point, we will actually take a 10-minute break. So, thank you all. Thank you to JHPC for coming.
Hearing of the night, this one being a little less challenging in terms of getting it opened. Actually, Police Chief Tom Jordan will give the presentation about this public hearing.
Yeah, hold on to your pants, folks. This is riveting stuff here, okay? We were asked to look at residential parking permits, some other things, some other options for the city. And to even consider that we had to look at some basic hurdles that we discovered right off the bat. One was our city lots have a prohibition on 24-hour parking. Therefore, we needed to introduce this ordinance language that would allow us to accept, make an exception for the 24-hour parking if they had a duly authorized parking permit. So that's really all that this wording does is it changes it so that we can accept vehicles in any future considerations for any kind of program from that 24-hour overnight rule. So that's all it really is. It's just wording to kind of give us that flexibility to create programs later on, whether it be for residential parking or for anything else. So respectfully submitted. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel, for Police Chief?
I just have one question.
All right, Mr. Baker.
And this might be for the manager. I assume any further discussion of the, what the parking permit will be like, is that going to be a part of the budget discussion and the fee schedule, or will that come separate from that?
Well, we have yet to get an endorsement of the downtown resident parking permit from the Public Safety Committee, but we will soon. And the nominal fee that I envisioned the fee, or I envisioned the program including, would be included in the schedule of fees in next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. I will officially open the public hearing. No one signed up to comment, so I will officially close the public hearing. And I believe both of these public hearings, the vote on these will be at our one April meeting, Mr. Manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so these will be back on for a vote in two weeks. Moving on to our consent and information agenda, the following items are on the consent agenda. One, the tax settlement report of February 2024. Two, the property tax releases of February 2024. Three, the audit contract for the year ending June 30th, 2024. Four, resolution directing the clerk to investigate sufficiency of petition for annexation, Pisca Hospitality LLC, intersection of Lambs Creek Road and US Highway 64. Five, City Council Housing Committee meeting minutes, December 12th of 2023. Six, City Council Downtown Master Plan Committee meeting minutes, January 10th of 2024. Seven, City Council Parks Trails Recreation Committee meeting minutes, January 17th of 2024. Eight, City Council Finance, Human Resources, and Citizen Appointment Committee meeting minutes, January 22nd of 2024. And nine, City Council Public Works and Utilities Committee meeting minutes, February 7th of 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on to unfinished business. The first item is the proposed amendment to the City of Brevard Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 16, Planning Board's Role in Zoning Map Amendments. And Mr. Aaron Bland, our Deputy Planning Director, will present.
Yes, thank you. So this is a follow-up to the public hearing you held on February 19th regarding the amendment to Chapter 16 of Unified Development Ordinance, section that pertains to legislative decisions, and specifically, the planning board's role in those decisions. So previously, it was discovered that that chapter does not authorize the planning board to forward you a recommendation for zoning map amendments that enlarge the area to be rezoned. Counsel instructed us to initiate this text amendment to provide the board with that authority. So just to remind you, we included a provision that should the board want to recommend an increase in the rezoning area, they have to hold a second meeting, before which we send a letter out to the newly affected property owners inviting them to that meeting. And we also included a provision that if it's the city who is initiating a rezoning and not a property owner, we send out that letter before the first planning board meeting. That way, anyone who is being brought into a rezoning process without having asked for it is made aware that they are, their property is included in that process. So the, like I said, the public hearing was held on February 19th, so it is before you tonight for a vote. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we will open it for discussion. Mr. Morrow.
It's just a continuing improvement. Thank you very much.
Ms. Holder.
No questions, then thank you.
Mr. Wise.
No questions, but thanks for the hard work.
Mr. Daniel.
I have no questions.
Mr. Baker.
I have no questions.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to our second item of unfinished business, which was the overlay district that was picked up off of the table at Mr. Wise's request. Do I?
Actually, I believe that there needs to be a motion by Mr. Wise at this point to remove it from the table and see if there's a second.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the downtown development overlay district second expansion proposal from the table. And what, make it?
Bring it before the council.
Bring it before the council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll open it for discussion. Mr. Wise.
At our last meeting, after kind of reviewing this, I had some questions, mainly about delineation that Aaron and the planning department helped me understand. And that was my only apprehension. I'm actually in favor of this, very much in favor of this district. So thanks to you guys for clarifying for me. And I just want to get this back up and kind of close it out as soon as possible. There's no questions there.
All right, Mr. Baker. Comments, questions?
Yeah, I think I've provided a lot of comments and questions previously on this. Do we now need a motion to approve this?
Once the motion to bring it off the table has come out, then there needs to be a motion made to approve the district or the resolution as drafted.
Okay, I will make that motion.
Well, we haven't had a vote on whether we take it off the table yet.
We didn't?
We're in the discussion.
Oh, we're discussing.
We're discussing about the table.
And a second to take it off the table. And we're in discussion. And then we vote.
Sorry, the joint historic, joint meeting, you know, okay. I have no further questions.
Mr. Daniel.
I have no questions.
Mr. Morrow.
Just one question. They propose red district there at Morgan and Gaston Street did not include the American Legion building. What was the reason why that did not go to Johnson Street on the county? And then there, is that where I'm seeing it?
Yeah, you're reading the map correct.
Right.
The direction we got from council was all parcels up front on both sides of Broad and Caldwell.
Right.
Counties properties go all the way a block deep to Gaston Street. But that's just a product of the way the parcels lie.
Okay.
Ms. Holder.
No questions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to take this matter off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Anybody have anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. All right, all right. Moving on to new business. We have the resolution regarding the Pisca Health property. Over to the city manager.
So I'd like to draw your attention to the updated resolution that I delivered to you earlier this evening. And for the benefit of our folks in the audience and our viewers who haven't seen this resolution before, the only difference is that it adds, now therefore be it resolved, that reads, "Brevard City Council authorizes the city manager to negotiate and execute a short-term memorandum of understanding with Pisca Health Foundation and other potential partners that memorializes the relationship between the parties during the preliminary design period." So just a document that outlines the nature of our relationship while, if this goes forward, the design is in progress. And of course, if the design is acceptable and the council and our partners wish to move forward at that point, we'll enter into a long-term lease. The resolution gives me the authority to negotiate the terms of the long-term lease over the design period, but it would ultimately be the council who approved those terms. And then finally, it authorizes me to seek outside, as I alluded to earlier, to seek outside funding from outside partners. And if that funding is found, to authorize an engineering firm, TPD, to commence the preliminary design that they described in their presentation.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, we have no second. The motion fails.
In the interest of us having a discussion tonight, I'm going to make a motion that we refer this to the Parks, Trails, and Rec Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open that for discussion. Mr. Baker?
Sure. I got to say, earlier, I felt like I was taking crazy pills a little bit as we sat through that discussion. And I think, I was reflecting on this this morning, I think this might be the most disappointed I've been sitting in this chair, possibly other than the camping ordinance that we talked about around Thanksgiving week over a year ago, I think. And both times, I was disappointed. It was because I felt like we were skipping many, many, many steps along the process that we've established as a city for how we discuss things like this. I ran for city council not entirely as a trail advocate, but part of the reason why I got involved in city politics was was that resolution about the Estito Trail that was passed in 2018 that the trail would be finished within three years. And in 2021, when I decided to run, just three years later, the trail was definitely not anywhere close to being finished. So I am intimately aware of the issues with our trail system and very invested in making the most of the Acusta Trail and the Estito Trail. So my opposition to this is not about that. And I think I'm going to focus my comments mainly on the boring stuff of process. But we have an Acusta Trail Advisory Committee that was set up to handle all of the advisory regarding the Acusta Trail. And that board did not make a recommendation for this trailhead to move forward. We also have a Parks, Trails, and Rec Committee, which I chair. And that committee did not make a recommendation for this trailhead to move forward. So no lower-level committee has taken up this particular trailhead as a recommendation. And I'm a little confused about how we got to this point. And I'm very concerned that, you know, some well-connected nonprofit folks, along with the mayor and some other people, have put this forward above other priorities that the city has established as soon as just a few weeks ago, when we had our strategic planning session. And that we have skipped over many, many steps in order to get to this point tonight. I'm also frankly, very disappointed in our staff. And I have been a councilperson who has complimented the staff. We have a formal council member who said you should never compliment the staff because, you know, I don't know, that, I did not agree with that. And I haven't agreed with that. And I do compliment the staff when I think they're doing a good job. But I'm also going to tell the staff when I'm disappointed. And I'm incredibly disappointed that we've put as much time and energy into this project as we have without any sort of direction from a citizen committee or from council, or frankly, from a council member, one of the decision-makers that are up here. And it's really hard to sit up here and be against a playground. It's really hard to sit up here and be against something called Freedom Park. And I'm not going to go into the, all the feelings I have about the name of the park that is already decided, apparently. But I don't want to be against those things. But I am for being very strategic about the Acusta Trail and the over $40 million that we have been gifted through hard work by the staff. I'll compliment the staff there, that getting those grants was transformational for the city of Brevard. And, I mean, truly, it is, Councilmember Morrow is much more well-versed in the history of Brevard than I am. But, you know, the railroad coming to town was transformational for Brevard. And the Bryant House that we discussed earlier, I mean, that is etched into the history of why, you know, that area, the depot area, you know, blew up at that time. And the Acusta Trail has the chance to do something just as transformational. But we have a responsibility, we can't just be excited about $40 million and be lackadaisical about our management of it. If anything, that we should double down on how we manage that money and the other nonprofit dollars that we bring to bear on it. We have a great responsibility to make the most of that money. And, you know, without going into too much detail about the Railroad Depot, I think that's why I started by saying I felt like I was taking crazy pills as we were having this discussion, because the Railroad Depot is the trailhead. It was built as a trailhead. And it's got everything you want in a trailhead. It has ample parking, it has bathrooms. It's located in a commercial district that is ready for new development. It is very close to downtown. It is on the way to Bracken Mountain Preserve, all the things that people have already brought up. The Railroad Depot, to me, is already the trailhead for the Acusta Trail. We just have to figure out how we can best get folks there. And to address the Wellness Park, that's a wonderful idea. Who can be against that? I think the city, if the Pisca Health Foundation is interested in developing that, the city has properties that we already own and control where we would accept a playground and a wellness park for all ages. I think that's a great idea. And I don't want to minimize the gift that that would be to the community. But it needs to be on, in the schedule of the city's priorities that we currently have. And it should not detract from the priorities that we've already set. So I've already talked at length. I'm going to leave it there. But I think we're going to talk about this more, I think, one more thing. The last thing I'll say is I do think that, and I said this at the end of our strategic planning session, during which we didn't talk about the Acusta Trail hardly at all. And I was pretty confused and upset by that because, again, this thing is coming. It is going to be transformational for Brevard. And we, as the public body in charge of the city, we need to have a planning session about the Acusta Trail specifically and how it interacts with all of our neighborhoods. You know, talk about the trailhead situation, which we have not really You know, talk about the trailhead situation, which we have not really discussed. Talk about security, talk about maintenance. We need to have that sooner rather than later. And and that should come well before we see a proposal for a trailhead that seems entirely premature.
Mr. Wise?
So, I don't want to echo too much about what Aaron said, so I'm going to, I kind of want to focus a little bit on the process that's happened here that's been a little confusing to me. So when we were first kind of tossing this idea around, we talked about maybe looking at this site along with others. I was on the Acusta Advisory Board when we were presented with, it was six or eight potential locations for a trailhead. And then suddenly, it feels like this thing catapulted and within less than a week, it got onto our agenda. With, the thing that troubles me the most is a potential lease agreement, which I don't think anyone would be in favor of without more fully vetting all the potential sites. This kind of project is difficult because there are not a lot of, there's no Goldilocks site out there. You know, there's no perfect site. So that makes it even more important that we spend some time to vet what we do have and really take a look at it. And we have some custom-made committees to do that very thing. We have the Acusta Trail, we have Parks and Recs, we have, that can look at these properties. I sit on Parks and Rec with Aaron, and I was on Acusta Trail, and we never talked about any trailhead stuff in depth. So it worries me a little bit that we got from kind of point A to point Z so quickly, even to the point of having a proposal for $85,000 that none of us had heard of before tonight. So the process is a little bit concerning. I don't feel like there's a rush on this. There's a lot of work to do in Acusta. We haven't even, we're still engineering it. But more importantly, I think, and Aaron talked about this a little bit, we need to also think very hard about the impact of Acusta on our community. We need to understand a lot with more depth, how this project will benefit us and can hurt us. Everything's a double-edged sword. And that includes things like how, where is the terminus of this? How do we want to think about what the gateway is? Are there multiple gateways? Or do we have multiple parking areas? There's just a lot of questions. I don't, I don't know. And while I love the idea of a wellness facility or center, and I love the idea of especially like multitasking and getting multiple functions in one place, to me, I think we need to slow it down a little bit and just really investigate and take our time. We actually have, in this case, the luxury of having a little bit of time and committees to help us with this work. And so there are a lot of issues about this, about this site that are worrisome, certainly. I don't think we need to get into those specifically now, but I think there's many opportunities and let's look at, let's look at that.
Ms. Holder?
I too, if you guys are confused, you can imagine how we feel, being new to council. And so I don't feel so bad about being confused if Aaron is confused.
He's always confused.
He's always confused. Well, he has company tonight. I love the idea of a wellness park, I really do. I don't know that, and I agree, you know, the process was a little different for me this time because I had not heard of this until we started reading this week's report. I think it should go back to the committee for recommendations to come back to us with a plan. And that to not only include Allison Road or Street, but to also include the depot and the five or six other possible opportunities. So if we could get information about all of the potentials and not just one area. And maybe the wellness park can be just that, a wellness park, and not necessarily the trailhead. And my concern also is with the stormwater management in that area, once the trail park is built. And then, of course, you know, how much would a lease look like? What would that look like? Certainly not ready to enter a contract at this point. And I'm not saying no to the wellness park, because I really, really like the idea. My concern with that would also be, would there be any type of management there for people who come to the park during certain hours to help us manage and navigate through the exercise equipment? And so that's a concern as well, that doesn't even fit right now, but, you know, thinking long-term about what that looks like, too. I just, I just really feel like entering a contact, a contract right now is premature and would like to see it go back to the committee for recommendations on all aspects.
Mr. Daniel?
Sure. I have a lot of concerns about the plan that was presented. And I'll start off, a lot of it's already been said, but I'm going to say it again. The first thing is the very idea of it. When I served on the Blue Zones Built Environment Committee, this property was considered for a marquee project to be the head of the Acusta Trail. And that committee rejected it for the reasons of, it needs a bridge, it floods, there are multiple trout streams, it's just generally not a good location. And now that we have full funding for this trail, I would say that it's actually time for a reset. My second concern is that the city of Brevard really doesn't have a plan. We don't have a vision for what we're going to do here. We've been working and planning to secure funding, and we have. And now, we need to work on a plan on how the trail will bring the best outcome to Brevard. This plan that was presented highlights how a haphazard approach can lead to unintended consequences, at best, and just plain bad decisions, at worst. This council needs a special planning session to understand what is about to happen to our community and to make intentional decisions to direct our future. We have several partners whose concerns and ideas need to be heard, who have been left out of the process, that formed this plan. We need to get our act together on this. I got a list here, so. My third concern is the park plan itself. I would suggest that if we want, if Piska Health wants to enhance the health and well-being of our community, that they could help us reroute the trail in front of Enmark and make that a safe passageway for our children, which I happened to see two days ago coming through town, a 12-year-old kid on a bike, by himself, riding in front of all those cars and entryways at Enmark and Deer Lake, or, yeah, Deer Lake. So that's a plan that's already begun, that is stalled out at the time, at this present moment. I think it needs to be picked back up and proceed with that. And then I personally have no interest in another project that no one asked for, no one needs, and in all probability, will get minimal use. And the city is going to be responsible for the maintenance of. And this is something that we addressed two and a half weeks ago in our strategic planning session, that we would not be just picking up stuff that we, and adding to our labor load. And here we are considering this. And the fourth has already been said many times, the depot. We got it. It meets the very definition that was given in the report of what a depot, or what the terminus should be. I saw the picture that was given, and I think Mark had a picture of that, and I was like, you know, our depot looks 10 times better than that. What are we, you know, why are we trying to recreate something? So I think we need, and part of that, too, though, is I think we need to reconsider where the Acusta Trail goes. I think that the Acusta Trail, we need to change the names. The Acusta Trail needs to come all the way into Brevard. The Estito Trail can be the spur that goes into the forest, that makes sense to me. And I would say that that's, none of this is creative thinking, it's just plain old common sense, in my mind. Another concern that I have is that the Acusta Trail has the potential for massive economic development. And I question why we would place the trailhead in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It's an economic development choke point. And again, it doesn't reach the city proper. Less planned and less make thoughtful, informed decisions about this. And actually, and again, a more disturbing concern is the process. The council finds itself in a situation that seems to be becoming a common occurrence. A widely unpopular project is brought to the city council out of the blue, without a recommendation from the Parks and Trails Committee or the Acusta Trail Advisory Committee. Staff has been instructed to proceed with planning, and money has been spent on studies. And it's a park that's already been named. I mean, and now, the city council has to dig out of this morass that was created without our knowledge or our consent. We need to define how we are going to proceed with the Brevard portion of the trail. We need to follow our established procedures, going through Parks and Trails Committee. And I believe that the Acusta Advisory Committee should be an advisory subcommittee to the Parks and Trails Committee. And that committee have clearly defined responsibilities and should operate like other committees. We have time to do this, and it is prudent that we do so.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Mr. Morrow?
Dave and Julie, in the Piska Health Foundation, thank you. And thank you for your vision to enhance community health. And your work in the past has actually brought what we all call as wellness, and most understood by most people uniquely in this Blue Zone community. Our city, like many local governments across the country, particularly need the partnership with public, private sector to accomplish community goals. In our recently completed Community Comprehensive Plan, 2030 Plan, it calls for a built environment that provides a safe, active, multi-useable system and community health and wellness. The recreational master plan called for, out of, said that wellness was the number one listing of citizens, I think it was 6,000, 6,000 people. Households that have a need for parks and recreation, by percentage of response, it was 48%. It was 6,909 people said adult fitness and wellness programs was number one. I thank the, so this opportunity for Freedom Park creates what is defined as a special use park. And Brevard is so blessed because we have Hap Simpson, we have the City Sports Complex, we have the community gardens, and we have the skate parks. Those are classic special-use parks. To have a park where someone with physical needs can take their wheelchair and swing, where someone of my age can go down and get fit, or as Dr. Tyson says, to have a place where seniors can go and and protect, or ways to exercise and prevention is most important. So I know that while on the Acusta Trail Advisory Committee, we talked about it. It's not, it was not a secret. And that we got to discuss several different things, but we got to this point, I'm not sure, tonight, it was, it's on the agenda, mainly because it's, you leverage your opportunities when you can. So I understand that. But we have a need for it. It's been on our wish list forever. It has nothing to do, in my mind, to the trail, other than the fact that it has along the Estito Trail. But I want you to remember that the $43 million of the Acusta Trail is not for this, it's overseen by the North Carolina DOT, which a council approves. That's not, we've forgotten that. And that is, and in my mind, we've discussed this as an option. I didn't think it's that great as a trailhead, but you have to realize, if you create any kind of special use park along the trail, you've got to decide and figure out how you can get from where, as I mentioned before, if you were going to Dolly's, you've already missed it, if you've started from Hendersonville. But the point is, we, the parking lot that's being proposed there is only 25 spaces as I was, it's in a package. And if you compare that to Franklin Park, Franklin Park has 32. So it's not like a huge parking lot. So that's why I made the motion. I don't have a problem with starting it. And obviously, I think there's more work to be done. I'm hoping at the end, thank you, Piska Health Foundation, that, you know, your vision will get realized.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
I believe, what is the motion?
Could you restate the motion? Please leave.
If I can find it.
Go to Parks and Rec.
To refer it back to the Parks and Trails.
Yeah.
To refer it to Parks, Trails and Recreation.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is referred back to Parks and Trails. Moving on to our next item. Our next item of new business is the resolution supporting the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Downtown Economic Development Grant Application to Enhance the Downtown Master Plan Streetscape. And I believe, Mr. Aaron Bland, are you presenting this, Aaron? Or did I get that right, wrong? Who's presenting this?
So I'll just make introductory comments. So this is, again, an opportunity to leverage some grant funds. The deadline for this grant is April 1, and so we needed to get this approval to you quickly. So I'll let Aaron talk a little bit more about what our plan, what our application would consist of and what we plan on using the money for if we are awarded it.
Yes, so like the manager said, this would be a resolution authorizing application for a grant to try to keep some momentum going with implementation of the Downtown Master Plan. This grant would be written to plant trees along West Main Street, primarily between Caldwell and Oaklawn, the block we're on right now, and then the next block. We only have one remaining street tree along that stretch. And so we would use the money for the trees, and then also the installation of what they call Silva cells, which is these underground, like root containment systems that allow for healthy trees to grow to substantial size without an increase in space needed, like we did with the bump outs. So we would work within the existing space on the sidewalk and not have to lose any additional on-street parking to add more trees. So that's what the grant would be for. Like the manager said, we have to submit it soon. Um, like the manager said, we have to, uh, submit it soon, so this resolution will need to be passed as a part of that process. And just, um, in the interest of clarity, there's a 5% cash commitment on, on our end if we were awarded the grant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bland. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open it for discussion. Mr. Daniel?
Uh, if we can get some money to do some downtown work, I'm all in favor of it.
Mr. Baker?
Me too.
Mr. Wise?
Uh, love, I love grant money.
Ms. Holder?
Um, do we know how much at this point? I saw at one point the, um, maximum allowable is for $800, $850,000, and then the suggestion that we just go to $400,000 to ask for that amount?
That's correct. We would not ask for more than $400,000.
Okay.
The grant itself allows you to ask for, if, wouldn't go that high.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
Mr. Morrow?
Good thanks.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, that is the end of new business. Moving on to remarks. Mr. Baker?
Sure. Um, I guess following up a little bit on my comments earlier, um, I would like to, um, a little while back, council paused, um, work on the Estito Trail or the city's multi-use path between Main Street and the Mary C Jenkins Community Center. And I would like to, um, suggest that we, we take that back up and start looking again at easements, um, for that connection. And also, uh, I would like to request an update on, um, the Rosman Highway to Brevard High School section of the path, um, as well as, um, the North Tannery section. You know, one, one thing that I was thinking about a lot as we had, um, I wish I had started a timer, how much I talked about the Physical Health Foundation property trailhead this week. But talked about it quite a bit with various people in the community. And, um, one of the things I, I kept coming back to was that our citizens need to have access to the Acusta Trail, um, from their homes and from their businesses. And, uh, for the people living here, um, that would be best done by foot or by bike or by board, um, and not by car. So, uh, one of the best ways to provide access to the Acusta Trail that's coming, uh, for our citizens is to complete the city's multi-use path that we started, um, many years ago. So, uh, along with, uh, discussing potential trailhead sites, um, I want us to see, I want to see the city, um, make a commitment to, to finish the, the multi-use path before the Acusta Trail is finished, um, so that we can provide access to, to the folks that actually live here. My next item is, is related. It's about, uh, the Acusta Trail Advisory Board that's been mentioned several times tonight, and, um, I serve on that board now, um, as the Chair of the Parks, Trails, and Rec Committee. And it seems to me that that, that committee has sort of been in sort of a weird middle ground between an official committee and, um, and, uh, less so. And I, I think I have a question for Mac, uh, Mr. City Attorney, regarding the, the resolution that established that committee. And, um, does that operate as, uh, any of our other city committees operates?
I believe it operates like exactly what it's listed as, which is an advisory committee because it consists of numerous people outside of the city's purview, including Conerving, Carolina. It was formed as a portion of the, um, it was formed as a portion, as, as a part of the lease when we took responsibility for the, uh, for the Acusta Trail. And so as a, because it was formed under that, I would have to do a little bit of research to give you a firm answer as to whether we could put it under the, I believe there was a suggestion, I don't know if you just made it or if, earlier, about putting it under the purview of Parks and Trails Committee as a subcommittee, a special subcommittee. Um, I would have to look into that to, to see if that was possible or if that would be considered a.
But, yeah.
Agree to that, that lease.
As it's currently constructed, though, that committee, we, we should be getting the minutes of that committee, and that committee can make recommendations to this board, is that correct?
That, my understanding is that board makes the recommendations to this committee regarding the Acusta Trail. But we can, you can, this council could shuttle that however they wanted to. If they wanted to make a, and say the Acusta Trail is required to make their advisory comments to the Parks and Trails Committee.
Right.
That would certainly be an amendment to that resolution perhaps that would say that that's who they make their reports to.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I'm not sure what, where I fall on whether it should report to the Parks and, I don't, that might be an unnecessary step, to be honest, in my opinion, but, but I, I just want to make sure it has the power to recommend, make recommendations to this board, to the city council.
That, that seems to be, based on my reading of what it's for, that seems to be the only authority that it has.
Okay.
You know, it doesn't have, I mean, it has, it's an independent advisory board. And that's all it does is give advice.
Mm-hmm. And how, how does that work with the, you said it was constituted regarding the lease? I mean, we're talking about some other city property along the trail that, that may eventually become the Acusta Trail by name, or a trailhead that exists outside of the lease from Conerving, Carolina. So how does that work with the, the purview of the committee?
It's a good question. And that's one that probably is a really good one to study and look at at Parks and Trails, and, and I'll, I'll look at it again. I mean, I don't know. I, I'd be lying if I did. Technically, it's for the Acusta Trail. The Acusta Trail terminus is out there by Oscar Bliss.
Right. For now.
For now.
Um, okay. Well, I, I hope that we can, I mean, my, my main concern in bringing that up is, is just that I think we need to formalize that committee and that board a little bit more. It's been in, you know, sort of a mode of, of different entities and stakeholders reporting the progress from their particular area on the Acusta Trail. But I think there needs to be, uh, you know, some decision-making involved at that level, um, so that when items like what we discussed tonight come up, that they actually feel empowered to make such a recommendation, um, which is probably how this whole thing should have gone from, from the get-go, in my mind. Um, all right, I'm going to completely switch gears and talk about something else. Um, and, um, it's, this is in regard to the, the DOT project on Wilson Road and, um, the potential, or the definite loss of affordable housing. And, um, I think, looks like Dan DeWitt left, but he wrote a good article about, about that. And, um, I, I struggled with that, um, because it is, I think we've learned, or I've learned, over the course of my time on city council, that, that although the city does not control housing directly, that we have to start thinking of housing almost like we think about infrastructure. In that it is really at the, at the base of what builds our cities. The people that live in the houses, of course, but you have to have those houses built for those people, and, and affordability is certainly a part of that. And when you lose part of that, and that is outside city limits, but, but I don't really care when it comes to affordable housing, um, when you lose any affordable housing, um, I, I would like us to think of it as almost, um, you know, the loss of some city infrastructure that we would be very upset about. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm heartened that the state DOT has a program where it sounds like the renters that are in that building, um, are, are paid, um, the differential of, of their new rent for up to three and a half years, which seems, um, like a good program. But from the city's perspective or from the county's perspective, hopefully, that doesn't do anything to mitigate the loss of that affordable housing. That, that housing is not being rebuilt. And, um, I think as we talk to our state leaders, and perhaps this can be raised at, when we're making recommendations to the state legislature, that, um, if NC DOT is, 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 has a project that, that removes housing, and particularly affordable housing, um, there needs to be some function of state government that, um, gives back to the community that has lost that housing. And, and the city has stepped up and made an effort to have a, a committee solely focused on that effort. And we could accept that state money and put it to good use to build, um, more affordable, affordable housing and actually replace that housing that is lost. Uh, I hope in the future that our, our county partners would also have, you know, a, a committee or a program where that money could go, since the property I'm talking about on Wilson Road is actually in the county. But I really struggled with that particular project because, um, it's very nuanced and it's hard to understand, and it's easy to, if you only know a part of it, it's easy to get, uh, very upset and start to point the finger one way or the other. But my biggest outcome was, it seems like, um, state road projects, if they're affecting affordable housing, um, it should be their responsibility to give back and, and actually replace that housing on the ground. So that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I'd like to echo, um, Aaron's comments on finishing, uh, the trail from Main Street to Mary C Jenkins that's put on hold. Um, we need to go ahead and, and get this trail done. Without that, it's, um, you have two separate trails. I mean, they don't, it doesn't go anywhere. So we need to get it done. I'd, I'd like to pick that back up myself. Um, I would also like to say my comments about the Acusta Trail Advisory Committee, um, I, basically really what I want to do, and I think it's what Aaron's saying as well, is to understand how it works, uh, and what is, what its responsibilities are to the city and whether those responsibilities, um, mesh with the city's vision, which I'm hoping we will be establishing, uh, at some point. And then my final comment is, I'd like to make a comment about our strategic planning retreat. I felt like that we had a really good day's meeting. And I feel like it was probably, um, maybe a half a day short of what it should have been. Uh, I feel like if, I know that the city manager takes the information, gathers from that, uh, meeting and makes his plans for the, uh, for the year, and I feel, as Aaron commented, that there were some things that were missed in that meeting that, uh, if we, you know, you, a lot of times you have to process stuff. You know, you, you talk about things and, you know, the next day you go, oh, what about, that was, you know, that thing that I forgot was really important. So I feel like there is, that to take what we came up with from that meeting and to say that that is the rule that the council is not a complete picture, let's put it that way. I mean, for instance, I mean, some things were mentioned, but only toward the end. So, um, I'll just make that comment. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Morrow?
I'm good, thank you. Oh, I bet you sang it off. Uh, French Broad Street's getting scraped on.
Oh, yeah. It's scraped up.
And Whitmire.
And Whitmire's complete. But, but, you know, they mill in French Broad.
Yeah, yeah.
So dreams do come true.
Ms. Holder?
Um, I have a question, uh, Wilson, I believe. When we had the retreat and we wrote down our, or we, uh, selected our priorities, when would we get a report from that about what our priorities were? And, um, perhaps that would give us more, more guidance? And, um, I'm sitting here thinking too, you know, the trails are great, and again, I love the idea of the wellness park. But when we attract more people to come and live here, where will they live if we don't have the housing? And I want to say thanks to the citizens, and I know most of the citizens are gone, but for taking time out to come and, and stand before the council and speak. That is, just watching is, it makes me nervous. So thank you for taking time to do that. And I want to also ask, um, I don't know if this is a council or Wilson question, uh, this is the first city I've ever lived in where we did not honor President's Day. Is that a consideration? Can it be a consideration? Would you have to do a study about what it would cost? What needs to happen for us to consider that?
Are you referring to making it a holiday for city employees?
A holiday, yes, yes.
Well, uh, just last year, we made Juneteenth a holiday.
We did, God, you did.
And all the relevant financial information about what it would cost, so to speak, to, you know, let employees have off that day. Uh, and so it would just be a matter of, uh, having the council direct us to make it so. And I can include that information in an upcoming memo to you all, and, uh, you can have it for your consideration during our, uh, budget deliberations in the weeks to come.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Wise?
I, um, sadly find myself to be an optimist, so, um, I look at the process we went through tonight, and while I think we discovered a lot of issues, I'm encouraged that we can have that process. So, um, and that includes the, um, public outreach for this particular, you know, some things on our agenda tonight, but also in general. I was really encouraged to see that our public is watching what's going on and engaged. So, um, I want to, our adoring public left, unfortunately, but they deserve a lot of thanks for, and thank you for the hardcore fans that are still here.[1638.83][1638.83](laughter) Even if you have to be.[1644.11][1644.11](laughter) Yeah. We can get out the lighters. Um, but although I think we have a lot of difficult things to talk about, difficult things to think about, um, I think we have a council that really does think, and I, I really appreciate that from everyone sitting up here and, and the public and our staff as well. Only one other thing, uh, I went to the Faith Housing Symposium that happened last week, um, and, and putting off my optimist hat for a minute, that was a very sobering, um, discussion about the legit, the very real crisis of housing, not only in our community, but nationwide. Um, I agree completely with you Pamela, um, and Aaron. I know these are passion projects for all, all of us up here. Um, we really need to put a lot of focus onto that. And once you really start digesting the scope of the problem, it, it is overwhelming. So I would just, I would just like to put that in everyone's minds, so let's keep that at the forefront. Thanks for everyone tonight, and that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Attorney?
Um, Madam Mayor, I'll just remind you, we will have a brief, um.
Close session.
Eight, eight, two, actual, two.
Two brief, close sessions.
For potential litigation, which.
Thank you for that reminder. Madam Clerk?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes, so a piece of good news. I found out about 10 minutes before I walked in here that the state has approved an extra $72,000 grant to us so that we can extend the Norton Creek String Bank restoration into the neighbor's yard next door. That was a action we took a few weeks ago. We finally got that approval, so we'll get the wheels turning on constructing that project. Uh, as for some of these other follow-up things, we will, uh, transmit those to you all. Probably not this Friday in a memo because I'm going to be out of the office celebrating my holiday, which is March Madness.[1776.26][1776.26](laughter) And, uh, but in, in the week after, we'll, we'll, uh, follow up and, uh, recall these items with you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. And I have just a couple of comments. Well, I am always an optimist, and, uh, that is good news. I'm really glad we got that grant. I am extremely. I am extremely glad to see that we are putting in for that grant that the Planning Department briefed, to try and get money to replace our aging trees on Main Street. You know, what people don't realize is, that's going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars. It all comes down to money, folks. Every project we do, everything that we attempt to do, takes dollars. And it's those priorities. So when we can get that outside money, we go after it. So thank you, Planning, for being so proactive and coming up with that. And hopefully, we will get that and replace some of those aging cherry trees that are out there. Also, I was really impressed with our architectural standards last week. I think we had absolutely three days of incredible community input. I think they, when they gave their outbrief, they were, said they were so surprised. Our community provided more input than basically anybody. And I said, that doesn't surprise me. Our community is always involved in providing input, and that's what makes us so strong. So I am looking forward to a great product from that, that team, that contract, and that will help us as we go forward, as we really start to wrestle with what is the vision and how should our city look, physically look with, you know, the architecture, and how do we preserve what's so very special here? So that was such a great week, last week with that. And I have to say, thank you to Shelley Webb and the folks that put on our Faith Housing Summit. That really was special, too. And I think it showed that incredible partnership that we have between our nonprofit community and our city government, you know, and other nonprofits, is something sort of unique. We're, you know, we're not afraid to step out and to reach for that vision. And so I was so proud of the fact that we were briefing actual initiatives. We weren't briefing theory. We weren't briefing wishes. We were briefing things that we were making happen. And so we're going to continue to work on those. But thank you so much to Sharing House and Habitat for Humanity, the two partners that really worked to put that together. So that was just absolutely outstanding. I also want to thank Piska Health Foundation. They came with a great vision. You know, the idea that, you know, we could be more inclusive in how we approach recreation. And it's something that I asked council to think about, because, you know, we have done a lot of recreation. We focused an awful lot on young people, and that's great, because we didn't have a lot for them five years ago when we started on this. But now we have two skate parks. We have a basketball court. We have a playground. We have a bike trail. Yes, it still needs work, but we haven't done a lot for part of another demographic that's here. And that's what Piska Health was really briefing tonight, was let's do something that's inclusive across the entire demographic of people who live here, that people that we have a responsibility to support. So that vision didn't go forward tonight, but I'm hoping that they will take that vision and they will rework it and hopefully come back, and that we can in the future partner to make something happen, so that we are reaching out to people who are in wheelchairs, who have mobility problems, who are older, who are just as much as of our community as everybody else. And so I thank them. I thank them for that vision and that effort and to come forward. And I thank the Planning Department for taking that, for working with the Acusta Trail Advisory Committee, and coming up with a proposed plan. It didn't fly, obviously. It got sent back for more work and more analysis, but I appreciate the fact that we, we took a look at it, we put it out there, and now we can work to make it even better. So thank you, Planning Department, and thank you, Piska Health Foundation. And finally, just a note, we have our monthly Meet the Mayor tomorrow at four-thirty, so anybody that wants to come and discuss anything is more than welcome to join me at the Mary C Jenkins Community Center. And with that, I believe I need a motion to go into closed session for litigation.
So moved.
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now moving into closed session.